County School District Three Board of Trustees Regular Monthly Meeting. It is Tuesday, January the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, six o'clock. We are meeting in the Staff Development Room of the Lexington Three District Office. All board members are present. I welcome you all and thank you for coming. At this time, I call our meeting to order. I would like to recognize two students who attend Batesburg-Leesville Primary School. Mallory Harris will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by Lilly Barton, who will lead us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Jesus, thank you for this day. Please be with us tonight and help everyone make good decisions for our school. Amen.
Thank you for your participation in our meeting. Great job. At this point, we are on item one point four, Approval of Agenda. You receive the agenda in your packet. Without objection, we will approve the agenda as presented. The agenda is approved. Item one point five, Approval of Minutes for the December tenth, twenty twenty-four Regular Board Meeting. These minutes are also in your packet. Without objection, we will approve the minutes as presented. The minutes are approved. We will move on to item one point six, Signing of the SCSBA Ethical Principals Poster. As a part of the School Board Recognition Month, board members across South Carolina are participating in an official signing of the South Carolina School Board Member Ethical Principals Poster during their January School Board Meeting. By signing the principles, school board members publicly vow to uphold effective governance principles and pledge to improve public education in their community. And this is the poster. And I would like to read it to all of you. The poster states, "As members of the Board of Lexington County School District Three, we pledge our efforts to improve public education in our community and will solemnly try to represent the interest of the entire district when making decisions and to rely on available facts and on our judgment rather than on individuals or special interest groups. Understand the proper role of the Board to set policies governing the district and to hire the Chief Administrative Officer to carry out these policies. Encourage an open exchange of ideas by all board members during the decision-making process. Seek regular communications between the Board and students, staff, and all segments of the community. Attend all board meetings to study issues facing the Board and to enact policies and official actions only after full discussion at such meetings. Work with other board members in a conscientious and courteous manner befitting the public trust placed in the position of School Board Trustee. Communicate concerns and public reaction to board policies and school programs to the superintendent and other board members in a professional manner. Support employment of the persons best qualified for staff positions and to ensure a regular and impartial evaluation of all staff. Avoid conflicts of interest and to refrain from using our board positions for personal or partisan gain. Encourage recognition of the achievement of students and staff and of the involvement of community residents. Support legislation and funding which will improve the educational opportunities and environment for students and staff. Take no individual action which would compromise the integrity of the Board or administration and to represent the confidentiality of information that is privileged under the Freedom of Information Act. Study current educational issues and to participate in training programs, such as those offered through the South Carolina School Boards Association. And make our district's educational setting the best possible to encourage all students to achieve and to love learning. At this time, we'll each sign the poster. Thank you. Next on the agenda is two point zero, Recognition. Item two point one, Dr. Gary Ann Gunner for fifteen years of service to Lexington County School District Three Board of Trustees by Mrs. Taylor.
Good evening, Madam Chair. It is my privilege this evening to recognize Dr. Gunner on achieving fifteen years of service as a school board member here in Lexington Three. Dr. Gunner began her journey as a school board member in two thousand and ten, and she has been a faithful servant of our students and our staff here in our district, contributing and just investing countless hours to improving public education, not only here but across the state as well. She is being presented this evening with a certificate of achievement and a lapel pin from the School Boards Association with the goal that she can wear the lapel pin not only at local school board events but also at state association events as well. So please join me in congratulating Dr. Gunner.
Congratulations, Dr. Gunner. Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Next, item two point two, Lexington County School District Three Board of Trustees, Recognition and Appreciation by Mrs. Taylor.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. As you mentioned earlier, January is School Board Recognition Month, not only here in South Carolina but across the nation as well. And the theme for School Board Recognition Month here in South Carolina this year is All In, and it reminds us to celebrate the unique role that school boards play in championing and advocating for quality education. And as the elected representatives of the people here in Batesburg-Leesville, you all represent the local community's voice and vision for our public schools. And for that and for your service, we are deeply grateful. So in each of your seats this evening, there are a few gifts from the district as a token of our appreciation. In your bags, you will find an umbrella and a special rain jacket that will help you get through some of those April showers that we get in the spring. There is also a Panthers car tag for your vehicle that you can put on the front of your vehicles. And you also have a copy of a very unique painting that the district curated from local artist Amanda Oswald, excuse me. And this is actually a copy of exactly what you all have that we had framed for here at the district office. And this artwork is unique to our district, and really, it's just a compilation of all of the beautiful things that make up Lexington Three and that embody the essence of what it means to be a Panther. And so we hope that you will frame it to your liking and that you will, you know, hang it on a wall somewhere that is visible so that it can remind you every time you see it of what a special thing you're part of here in Lexington Three and how deeply we are grateful for you and grateful for your service. So thank you all for your contributions here in Lexington Three.
Speaking for all board members, it is our honor to serve in this capacity, and we thank you, and thank you very much, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. We move on to three point zero, Consent. Item three point one, The Financial Report with Mrs. Roden.
Good evening and Happy New Year. You got your December thirty-first statements in your packet. The item of note is that our taxes are local revenue. End of the year, people started paying their taxes a little early, so our local revenue's up for the month of December. Everything else is pretty normal. Do you have any specific questions about the revenues and expenditure statements? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roden. Next, item three point two, Superintendent's Report with Dr. Atkinson.
Thank you. We've had a great return to the second semester. It's only been fourteen school days since our last school board meeting, but we've had our customary severe weather event that we seem to have. Every time we start a new semester, we started the year with a hurricane and then with freezing weather. And I think we've done something similar just about every year with hurricanes or some event. But we are looking forward to a great spring semester with many, many more great performing arts events and also athletic events. So we're looking forward to a very successful semester. Right now, I'd like to recognize and welcome Ms. Adrian McDade to the Panther family. If she would please stand. We are so excited that she has joined our school district, and we're looking forward to great things in her leadership in our school child nutrition program. So thank you, Ms. McDade. We look forward to a lot of years of working with you and our family. This Friday, the seventeenth, we're going to have a celebration in the new gym. We are calling this our first Heritage Hoops Event. We will be playing ninety-sixth High School, and we're going to recognize and celebrate several former coaches and players and just thank them for their contributions to the Panther Athletics over the years. And we're also going to celebrate our new gym and many years of good, great use and lots of wins and championships that do occur in the future in that facility. We will also be having an open house for the primary school and the high school on Thursday, January the thirtieth. It'll be from five to seven, and it will give us an opportunity to showcase all the great things that we've completed, all the construction projects, the additions, the facility upgrades that were made possible by the twenty-twenty bond referendum. Now, the new gym celebration, let me go back. I don't think I told you the time. We anticipate it starting at six o'clock on Friday. You know, there'll be a JV game beforehand, and it'll be before the girls. So it should be right around six, and then the open house will be from five to seven on the thirtieth. A few notable events that wrapped up the month of December I just want to highlight. First of all was the primary school's four K box parade, the middle school's color run, the high school chorus performed at the Caroline Opry in Myrtle Beach in December as well. And our Panther players performed the play Southern Fried Funeral in Haynes Auditorium on December thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth. And if you missed that, they will be having an encore performance on Saturday, January the eighteenth at two and six, and also on Sunday, the nineteenth, at three. This is a comedy. It is a great performance. A lot of character inside Haynes Auditorium. You know, the seats are the old maple and wrought iron, and they are beautiful. But if you go, I would recommend you take a stadium cushion. But they're doing a lot of work there, and, you know, and our Panther players are contributing to the efforts to actually make that a really center of our community with future performances to follow. So I hope you can attend. Our high school avid students spent a good bit of time the month of December at reading to our second grade students at the primary school. As always, our middle and high school winter band concert was very successful. I hope you were able to attend. But I want to highlight our middle and high school winter choral concert. I'm not sure if you were able to attend, but the best I could count, and there were students moving around, but I kept getting to somewhere around a hundred and thirty students onstage as I was trying to count them very quickly. And I just want to highlight how much improvement we've had in all of our arts programs, especially the chorus program that seems to have gone from zero to sixty in just a few seconds. And it was wonderful to see so many of our students in sixth through twelfth grade up there and singing traditional Christmas music, and it was a great event. And last, a few upcoming events for the remainder of this month. We will have Martin Luther King Junior Holiday on Monday, the twentieth. The junior class ring ceremony in the Fine Arts Center will be on the twenty-eighth at six P M. And the Panther Cheer Camp in our new gym will be on Saturday, February the first, from nine to twelve. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Atkinson. Now, four point zero, Public Participation. Any Cards Mysteri? Thank you. All right, we'll move on to five point zero, Action Items. Item five point one, Approval of B L E S Turnaround Plan Presented by Mrs. Bryant, Mr. Velasquez, and Mrs. Kennedy.
Good evening. Thank y'all for this time. I, you know, when we got the news of the rating for the elementary school, none of us felt that that's very indicative of the work that's being done over there. And test scores are realistic things that live in the world, but I don't think they tell the whole story. But having said that, I stand here tonight so very proud of the administration and the faculty and staff at Batesburg-Leesville Elementary School. They are showing such Panther pride in that they're taking this as a point of contention, and they have dug in like I have never seen. I get goosebumps going into elementary school. I've been over there quite a bit this year, and I always, I just, I leave excited. And then poor Dr. Atkinson has to hear about it when I get back. I have to tell him everything that I've heard. But it's just been, it's been really refreshing for me that the staff and the administration over there have taken this as, this is not who we are. This is not reflective of what we do. And I cannot wait for Mr. Potts to make his presentation next year for report card. I just know that we're going to see just such great results. We're already seeing some of those. So I have asked tonight for Mr. Velasquez and Mrs. Kennedy, who are going to present the plan, because it's their plan. But I will preface by saying, putting this plan together was not a huge deal for us. Mr. Potts has it virtually ready to be submitted. It looks very much different than this wonderful PowerPoint that the administrators at the elementary school have created. And it wasn't difficult to do because they were already doing these things. They came back this summer with a plan to improve, and we just wrote down what's happening. So there's no fiction. It is real work that's happening, and it's going to make differences for our real students that we love and want to push forward. So I'm going to turn it over now to Mr. Velasquez and Ms. Kennedy, and they're going to tell you all the amazing things that are happening there.
Good evening. I can tell you, as any principal, I am not as excited when Mr. Potts presents in October. It is a nerve-wracking thing, like a coach with his first game. Ms. Bryant said a lot to Dr. Atkinson's school board. We're coming tonight for the approval of this continuous improvement and turnaround plan because of the report card rating. It is our duty to inform you and the, you know, community how we're going to get this thing done. So bear with me as I take you through it. If you need to stop me, that's fine. We got a lot of words on here, a lot of things, you know, we'll try to explain to the very best of our ability. So just a little reminder, Mr. Potts presented these numbers to you back in the fall. The report card essentially this past year was scored in four areas. Academic achievement, student progress, English learner progress, which comes from the access test. That's a little different from our SC Ready that we take. And our school climate, which we were, you know, certainly very pleased with that rating. As you can see, in these three areas, two of those are based around our SC Ready score. So as we see our students improve and hopefully improve more than a grade level, that will translate over into our academic achievement piece, which our goal that we've said is to get above average. I think we're, as a district, we don't need to shoot for average. We don't ever need to be, you know, teetering on that below-average category. So that is our, that is our goal, and obviously our ML students, which we'll talk about later.
Okay, so we have developed three performance goals that we think address the majority of what were the weaker spots on the previous slide. So we had academic achievement and academic progress, both as areas where we could improve along with ML learner's performance. So to address the academic achievement and progress, we developed a math achievement goal and a reading achievement goal. And then to address the ML learner progress, we made their own specific goal in that category as well. And they are super wordy, but we wanted to make sure that on our plan we encompassed everything that we have sought out to do this school year to make some changes. So I will read them even though I know they're wordy. Our math achievement goal is to increase opportunities for teachers to identify and close gaps in students' foundational knowledge and fundamental math skills by providing data-meeting opportunities each month that involve teachers, lead interventionists, instructional coach, and administration, and to provide teachers with professional development surrounding I-Ready assessment data and I-Ready MyPath opportunities for personalized learning and small group instruction, all contributing to elevating students' math understanding and achievement. And then our reading achievement goal is similar. It is to advance student understanding and achievement through the enhancement of rigor and consistency utilizing the H M H into reading curriculum to promote student success with writing through the incorporation of Thinking Maps instructional support and through the integration of student writing across content areas. To provide teachers with professional development surrounding I-Ready assessment data and I-Ready MyPath opportunities for personalized learning and small group instruction, helping teachers identify and close gaps with students' reading understanding. And then our ML learner growth goal is to improve the rate of growth and performance of our multilingual learners on the access test by supporting the students and the ML teacher with assessment strategies and content-based professional development. So based on those three goals, the next slide gets into some overarching strategies that we have put into place that address all three of those goals.
So I'll start at the top with our top bullet. One goal is to track our students' progress through I-Ready. I-Ready is similar to MAP that you've probably seen in regards to how we take it, when we take it. We will, you know, we've already met for our mid-year SLOs with our teachers to track how they've done. I was very pleased with our data. I can tell you that all of our teachers met their winter goal, which is a half a year's growth for their classrooms. I'm proud to say that, I'm not going to give you a number because I did not get that data, but a lot of our teachers have already met their yearly growth with their students. So we have a typical growth within I-Ready, and a lot of our teachers are working on the stretch growth, which is what we've got to have to make up gains for, you know, whatever losses our students have had. On the second bullet, they encouraged us to provide forty minutes each week in math and ELA. I can tell you, I check that on every Friday and or Monday to make sure students are getting their times in. I'll contact teachers to let them know that, you know, so-and-so's got an hour on I-Ready, but no lessons passed this week. We need to find out what's going on there, and that's been very helpful. We, you know, early on, we saw those numbers kind of all over the place, but they've leveled out to where our grade levels are right at their goals. Teachers are participating in multiple I-Ready professional developments. We've had two, and we've had two great presenters so far at our school that have really helped me to dig into that data. Our fourth bullet there is part of our MTSS process. We're meeting monthly to talk about individual students' data, whether they're struggling or whether they're, you know, excelling. And then our final bullet is Panther Time, which you're all familiar with. We started that, you know, years ago. The difference this year, I'm having our teachers turn in their small group plans just so I can check to make sure they're working, but that we're working smarter and harder, not instead. But just to make sure that we're targeting those goals and that they're using the data that they're getting from assessments. Additional things that we are doing, we are utilizing our new reading curriculum. I don't know if I should say this, but you may have seen on Facebook that some folks weren't real happy with some of our reading assessments. That's a good thing from a principal's standpoint. It means we're challenging our kids. Them just to be flying through, making hundreds on everything, and then we have a report card that we do, you know, it doesn't add up. I do think those things combined with our new reading curriculum are pushing our students, and I think we're seeing growth. I'm proud of them for that. And I told them, you know, I'll get you back. If a parent's got a problem, you know, I'll be glad to talk them through the reasoning behind that. Ms. Boltknight, Ms. Carrie, everything cyclical, as you know, in education. And so we are back to Thinking Maps.
I love it.
It is the way I learned and I taught when I was a fourth grade teacher.
It's a good program.
So I was excited. Ms. Bryant was, you know, willing to jump on. We had some good scores, you know, back during that time, especially with reading, which ties me into our third bullet, that we're utilizing those to practice, to try to simulate the SC Ready writing and not just, you know, say, hey, today everybody's writing with a prompt. We're having the teachers take the kids through the Thinking Maps that they're going to use at the end of the year, rough draft, final draft, and having the teacher score those. So I'm really hopeful that having a strategic plan for our SC writing is going to benefit us in our overall ELA scores. Can't brag enough on the next two things about Jennifer Patrick. She's led a lot of this, taken us through the Thinking Maps training. Ms. Ashley Boltknight has helped her. She was, I believe, a trainer for that. Years ago, when I probably, Dr. Gunner and I, when you were board member and I was just becoming an administrator, that was one of the first trainings that we were a part of. And then the final bullet is, you know, we've got to continuously analyze these reading assessments. I do have to find a balance of being fair to our students that are maybe used to things that, you know, they've been excelling on and, you know, us upping the rigor. So we're constantly trying to develop those things. We're working on that in math as well. So hopefully, those things will benefit us. I think it's worth noting, Sam and I hold each other accountable for being in classrooms. We have a strategic observation schedule. I called Ms. Bryant Monday. I was in a classroom. Thank goodness she had called me back, and they had gone to the bathroom. But we hold each other accountable for getting in, taking notes to make sure we're hitting. We organize groups in a certain way, and we're hitting those teachers multiple times, giving feedback, letting them know that we support them, and just, you know, you got to inspect what you expect kind of thing, so. So. Our final piece is, I think, the one that caught myself and probably a lot of people off-guard the most, was our ML students, students that, you know, speak a second language. It dropped dramatically, and I think that happened across the state. Ms. Stacy Westbury is full-time with us now, so she is utilizing practice assessments with our students so that they, much like we do with SC Ready writing, can practice that access test. The students have to speak into a microphone, which you don't ask that a lot of kids in a general setting. So they've already started working on, and I've met with several groups the last couple weeks and told them, speak confidently, speak loud, so that the system is picking up what they're saying, not because of lack of knowledge on their part, but just maybe confidence in being used to speaking into the microphone. We really hope that's going to help. Ms. Westbury is with us full-time now. We don't have to share her, which has been a big help, and bless her heart, she's, you know, back during COVID days, she was a nurse and doing everything else, but she's back-settled and with us full-time, so we're very, very excited about that piece and thank your support and funding that. And then we've also included her in all of our professional development, so she knows what we're doing, Thinking Maps with our Into Reading curriculum. She is a part of all that, and our resource teachers are too. They're taking a lot of the lessons and applying that into the writing curriculum in their room. Now, some of those students can't, you know, put together some of the pieces of work that we want them to right now. Went in one other day, they were doing their Thinking Maps and helping organize their thoughts, so it's just an extension of the classroom, not a separate piece of instruction. So. And lastly, Ms. Westbury is looking at going to visit some other areas that are successful with the ML students. So we're going to get her on the road and let her visit to see what other, you know, easy strategies we can use that we just have overlooked at some point in the past to get that section of the school report card up. Any questions? Sorry, I tried to streamline it but not bore you to death, so.
When I read over my notes and I got to the part that says Thinking Maps, I threw a little happy face right there in the pink marker. I was so glad to see it come back.
And the students have responded well to it. It makes sense to them.
It does.
And it, you know, science and social studies is a very easy opportunity, yeah, to incorporate it throughout the subjects because of the vocabulary and, you know, some of those concepts.
And I'd like to point out that we're doing Thinking Maps K-5. So primary school is working with this as well, and we have a district that's going to build K-12 for writing, because I truly believe that if we can learn the writing process and increase those skills, it will help in reading, but it'll also help in mathematics because it teaches a process, and we learn to think that way. So we're doing that K-12, but we are doing Thinking Maps K-5.
Good.
I'm not a big resource person. I think we have what we need. We just have to execute better, if I'm being honest. You know, we've got to do a better job leading our teachers. You know, we pride ourselves on transparency. If I tell you we're doing this, I can promise you we are. But I think the new curriculum was a huge piece for us. We needed something, you know, I don't mind if you, this is a private conversation, but I told Ms. Bryant, you know, two years ago, I want to scroll a little like 1989. I think some of the things that we used to do, we, you know, got rid of because you can't tweet about it and present about it and things like that. And I think that's the way forward, in my opinion. And so I don't need a, I don't think we do, but I appreciate that, and we're always looking to improve, so that very well may be the case down the road. But with our curriculum, our Thinking Maps, you know, literacy coach is a big plus. Jennifer Patrick is just a huge help to us. Having interventionists that we fund, a huge help. We just got to execute.
And having that ML teacher.
100% that too. Yes, ma'am.
That's important. Are there any other questions of the presenters? Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the BLES turnaround plan as presented by the administration.
I have a motion from Mrs. Burgess to approve the BLES turnaround plan as presented by the administration. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mrs. Kerry. Any discussion? Here are none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. We thank you all for what you're doing, and thank you so much for presenting to us tonight. All right, next, we will group items 5.2 and 5.3, second reading approval of policy ADB, drug-free schools, and of policy GBEC, drug-free schools, presented by Mrs. Bryant.
Thank you. And before I do that, I would just like to thank each of you for the support that you give us, the fact that we're able to purchase Thinking Maps, the fact that we're able to have a full-time ML specialist in that school building. But, you know, we, when we are talking and we are planning, we never feel like that we can't ask and that you will give us what we need. So it's just, it's just a really good place to be, and having been in places where that was not always the case, it makes you extra appreciative. So thank you for each of you for understanding what we're really here for and providing the things that we need. Thank you. Okay, and now we'll get on to the policies. These are the same policies I presented last month for first reading, and there have been no changes to content in these. I'll be glad to take any questions you have regarding them.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we give second reading approval of policy ADB, drug-free schools, and policy GBEC, drug-free schools, as presented.
We have a motion from Mr. Kaufman to give second reading approval of policy ADB, drug-free schools, and policy GBEC, drug-free schools, as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mrs. Derry. Any discussion? Here are none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bryant. Next on the agenda is 6.0, executive session. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session for the discussion of personnel matters.
We have a motion from Mrs. Kerry to go into executive session for the discussion of personnel matters. Do I have a second? Second by Dr. Gunner. Any discussion? Here are none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. We are now in executive session.